Okay, you're live.
Okay, great, thank you. I'm going to open a special session of Hood River City Council at noon on the 18th of December 2020. We have one item to discuss today, and that is the property that we purchased last January on Rand Road to be used in some form or manner for affordable housing. So that's what we're here to discuss, what, how, and how much, and those kind of things. So Kevin, did you want to give us a presentation? Is that what we should go first?
I would like to, but I think that City Manager Rachel Fuller will start things off. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, thanks Kevin, and thanks Mayor for that introduction. We are here today to talk about your vision for the Rand Road Housing Development Project, and Kevin's going to give an overview. But I just wanted to just reinforce that the purpose today is to listen to your vision. This project is really unlike most of the items that we bring to you. Typically, we're asking about your long-term vision for the community, and we're talking about the policies that will allow the community, public and private sector, to realize that vision over time. So today's project really requires a different hat. So taking off your city council hat, putting more of your redevelopment commission hat on, I think is the best way to think about it, because this is a real project, and you are representing the owners, the community, and you really, as the owner, need to articulate your collective vision. So there's going to be plenty of time to talk about the realities, but we have to start with a vision. So that's what we want to articulate from you today. I think the way I've been thinking about it is to ask yourselves, if I could do anything here, this is what I would do. So with that, I'll turn it over to Kevin, and he'll get us started. Thank you again for your time today.
Thank you, Rachel. Councilors, good to see you again. I think the last time that I was in front of you was in late October when we were talking about establishing a contract with Leland Consulting Group to lead this project. This week, I've been working with staff at Leland and meeting with members of the community, stakeholders, neighboring property owners, other organizations to talk about this site. And we have a number of questions that... All right, I knew there was going to be a hiccup here. In a number of questions for you that we had for our stakeholder groups, who want to share with you as well. And pardon me while I fiddle with our connection here. So the site, you're familiar with it. This is in the city context, and as we drill in, you know the location just south of the intersection of Cascade and Rand. Background, going back to 2015, the adoption of the city's housing needs analysis. You're familiar with that document. Since that time, there have been a few changes. Assumptions about population growth have changed. Some of the findings in that document probably could be updated. In fact, you've seen an update fairly recently in late 2019 to some of the data that came, that was used in the housing needs analysis. I want to mention also that the housing strategy that was adopted in 2015 by the council acknowledged a three-pronged development strategy. The third strategy being development of affordable housing. Again, update in 2020, here we are, and the city has purchased this property. Want to recall that with that purchase, the Oregon Business Development Department did grant funding, and there were terms associated with that funding. We need to produce at least 50 housing units on the site for households earning at or below 120% of area median income. That needs to occur on at least one-third of the site, and it needs to remain available for at least 30 years. Again, as Rachel went over at the intro, today we're talking about vision and goals. Who are we trying to serve on the site? How should it be done? What types of housing are appropriate? And in addition to streets and other infrastructure, what else should be provided on the site? You've seen this graphic before. This was in that 2019 update to the data that Eco Northwest provided to us, showing income groups. At the lower end of the spectrum, left side of the screen, you see a 30% of median family income ranging up to, at the right side of the screen, up to 120% of area median income, kind of giving us a sense of the types of folks who may fall into these classifications. And so our big question for you to start off with, at the bottom of the screen there, in your opinion, what household income levels should be future housing on the site be targeted towards? And this will be really helpful to the consulting team as they work through development scenarios. So with that, I want to turn this back over to the council for discussion, that question.
So should we just go through these one question at a time? Is that what you'd like to do, Kevin? And then you can kind of just get all our separate opinions on this?
Yeah, and Kevin, your presentation's not very long. If I could make a suggestion, let's go through them all and then come back. So everybody knows what all the questions are, and then take them one by one.
All right, so we're interested in the income levels that you're interested in serving. And we've got a couple of questions that we also, or statements, and we want to gauge your level of support for these. Subject to market conditions and the availability of grant funding, the more housing that can be provided on the site that is affordable to households of lower incomes, the better. Do you agree with that statement? Do you disagree with it? Is there a range of opinion? Second question, ideally, the site would accommodate housing that serves a mix of incomes, from low income to workforce to market rate, as well as a mix of household types. For example, families and seniors. There are benefits to a diverse community, and it is acceptable to include market rate housing on the site. And what's your reaction to that statement? Do you agree with that? Do you strongly agree? Do you not agree? Somewhere in the middle. Continuing on, housing on the site, who is it for? Is it for renters? Is it owner-occupied? Is it a mix? And keeping in mind the income levels that we want to serve, what type of housing do you think would be appropriate on this site? These drawings may have seen in the past, on the left side of the screen, lower density, conventional, single-family dwelling. Ranging up to the right side of the screen, multifamily and apartments. And we're also going to ask you about neighborhoods or places that you think are good examples that we might want to think about as we look at development scenarios for this site. In addition to certain infrastructure, the Westside Community Trail, perhaps some park space on the site. Are there other elements that we should be thinking about? And kind of in conclusion, anything else you want us to go over? So I'm going to skip back to the front end of these issues, and that's what we'd like to discuss today. So Mayor, maybe I can turn it over to you, if you wouldn't mind, to help us, lead us through this question.
Sure, yeah, I'm happy to do that. So we've had a little bit of time to think about the first question. And so does anyone want to go? It says, "Select three income groups."
Yeah, the idea being there, you know, should we be targeting, for example, 80%, 50%, and 30% below categories? Or is there another range, perhaps?
Okay. Mark's got his hand up, so let's go ahead, Mark.
Well, I was, this is a process question more. What I would like to do is present my vision of the site, which answers a lot of these questions in a picture, you know, in a word picture, as opposed to question A, I say this, and question B, I say that. Because to me, the, the... Breaking it into a bunch of different questions, you get a range of opinions, but they don't, might not draw a picture. So if that's not going to work, I'm happy to answer question by question, but I would prefer to, that, to present my idea that way, and I prefer to understand what other people have been daydreaming about for the last year on this thing too, so.
I mean, everybody's opinions, however you want to share them. But the more direction you can provide, the more direction we can get to the consulting team. And of course, they're going to be testing development scenarios in the future based on the direction that we're giving them now. And we will have some opportunities to refine what they provide to us. But any foundation that you can help us provide to them would be fantastic. Thank you, Councilors Ann Miller.
So I think that if we get into descriptions of pictures that we have, like what you're talking about, Mark, like your big vision, that we might not get this done in an hour, if everyone has that. So I...
Two minutes.
Two minutes, okay, all right. So I'd prefer to go through the questions, and then if you can, give us an answer to this. Or maybe just, you can go last, if you'd like to, Mark, on all of this. But I don't know how many other people have, you know, this big vision thing, but I can answer all these questions. And I think we, hopefully, we can answer these questions within a person's bigger vision too. So I think we should try to answer the questions and go through those first, and see if we can get through those in a decent amount of time. And hopefully, we'll have like 15 minutes left at the end, and then everyone can give their vision verbally at that point. Gladys, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I'd be more than willing to answer the question one by one, or I already just created a list of all priorities, and I can give it to you guys in one minute.
Okay, so you've got a vision like Mark does, is that right? Kind of a vision of what it would be?
Absolutely, but I will stick to the plan that you're guiding us through, and I will pick my three. It would be 80%, 50%, and 30%. I am aware that we have to have a certain number of 120%. I'd really, these are my top three, 80, 50, and 30.
Okay, and if I can jump in real quickly, the obligation that we have to the state is to provide 50 units at or below 120% AMI. So your selection is in that.
Okay. Tim? So if you guys can give your numbers, and when you talk, if you could let me know if you want to give your little, your vision when we get done with this too.
80, 50, and 30. And yeah, sure, I would like to elaborate.
Okay, great. Megan?
Um, yeah, I mean, I think 80 and below is definitely our highest need. You know, based on Morrison, we were definitely doing some focus on 60 and below. I'd certainly like to continue to do that work. And then I do think there's some value in having some mixed diversity, so I could see an 80 to 120 as my third as well.
Okay, anyone else? Eric?
Yeah, I think I share the consensus in the group. My vision would be for, to the greatest extent possible, to focus this project to achieve a meaningful improvement for the lowest levels, 80% and below, while also using it as an opportunity to achieve other goals, but having that be the primary objective. And I can, I'll say more about it as well, but that's just, I'm just trying to answer the question.
Okay, Jessica?
I agree with others. I think focusing on the 80 and below, but kind of like Megan said, I feel I would like to see some mix, you know, thinking about housing to, that we could... This is a later question, but, you know, housing that would be available to buy and kept perpetually affordable, which I see that would probably be, needing to be some of it in the higher range, that 80 to 120, but primarily the 80 and below.
Okay. Um, Mark, do you want to give a number now, or you want to wait?
No, no, please. Once we're, we have a system now, so.
Okay.
I would love to answer as we go. I think at least 75 units at 80% and below to, to be, you know, Morrison Plan-like. And then I think additional units in the 80 to 120 range would, would and could fit in there as well.
Okay. Um, basically, I'm going to agree with everyone else, 80 and below. And I'd say 80 and below, as many units as we can possibly get on there without it feeling uncomfortable for the people that are living there. I want some green space, but I want to prioritize housing, because who knows how long it's going to be till we get another piece to do this? So as many as we can, 80 and below. Kevin, we can't hear you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on that question? Any other points anybody wants to raise? Okay. So again, how strongly do you agree with these statements? And we did hear from a few of you, again, more, as much as possible for households of lower incomes. Alternatively, creating some kind of a mix, recognizing there could be some benefits there, and up to market rate. So thoughts?
Kevin, can I just ask, when we say market rate, what do we actually mean?
Market rate being not subsidized. And basically, the same price that a developer of any other subdivision might be trying to fetch right now, depending upon the type of housing that is constructed.
I guess maybe, like, is, you know, 100 to 120 market rate, or is that below market rate?
Well, I think what the data that we've got right now suggests that even up to 120% of area median income is not being met by market rate housing.
Okay, so market rate is something above 120?
An hour, yes.
But they're not selling cottage, cottage code development, so we don't know what the new set of housing types will cost.
Correct, yeah, I think the idea being with a cottage code, another code changes an emphasis or some incentives to building smaller homes, an expectation that smaller may be more affordable? Yes?
Well, I can tell you that market, even for a small house, is not including the land price, about $225 a square foot, even for a small house this year. Just so people have an idea what that is. Somebody else had their hand up? Tim?
Thanks, Mayor. Kevin, you know, I guess that's one of the reasons, you know, this question kind of, one of the reasons why I wanted to know about more about what Claudia von Floto had indicated in her email, you know, and trying to view this mixture issue in the context of neighboring properties. So I mean, you know, there's mixture within, within this parcel, and then there's potential mixture of adjacent properties. Are you going to go into that at all?
Well, I can say that I did have an opportunity to speak with Claudia von Floto, representing her family's interests. Got quite a bit of property in the vicinity of the site. They don't have a specific development proposal in mind at the moment. They have been working with a potential developer, and they may be submitting an application for a pre-application conference to talk about a concept for their site. But I don't have a lot of detail about what that might look like. But if we look at the zoning of their property, general commercial adjacent to Cascade, from R3 higher density, a little bit further south, and currently R1 to the south of that, they've got quite a bit of residentially zoned land. So based on zoning, I think we could expect it is likely we would see some other housing types developed on their property at some point in the future. They've also expressed, though, some concerns about infrastructure costs and how those affect their decisions on whether to move forward with a project, or when, what the timing is. That too might affect the type of development that occurs on that site.
Thanks, Kevin.
Does anyone, Jessica?
Um, I was going to say, I feel very strongly in favor of number one. On number two, I don't think that we should put market rate housing on the site. I definitely support the idea of the mix of incomes and mix of household types. And this is also kind of where I talked about a little bit, that I don't know if it's possible to build some permanently affordable housing for sale, so not just rental units, for example. Yeah, okay.
And to answer that real quickly, we did speak with, in Medenbach of the Big River Community Land Board members there, and their idea would be yes, to build some for-sale housing on leased land would remain affordable over time.
Thank you. Oh, and I was going to say, I don't think that we should plan, we should plan on things happening on adjacent properties to meet the mixture that if, that, you know, this is the property we have control over, and so I would want the mixture to be on what we can control.
Mark?
So just answering the questions, I think that, you know, I'll get into the vision stuff at the end, but I don't think we should just mush as much as we physically can onto the site. I think that's sort of a dangerous design criteria. I think we should get a significant number, you know, maybe 100, 80% and lower. But that still leaves room for number two, which I think is important to have a mix of up to the one, to get in some of the 120 stuff. So I read number one as slightly in conflict with number two, and I would, I would say that there's the ability to have a mix.
So Mark, when you say a mix, are you saying a mix up to 120? Or you're saying a mix including market rate?
No, I don't know that 120 isn't market rate when we talk about cottage homes, but I would say if it needs to be subsidized. So I'd say nothing on the site should be more than 120%, so.
Okay. Others? Megan? And then Gladys?
Um, yeah, so I guess number one, you know, putting as much affordable housing on the site as possible. I both strongly agree in the realm of, you know, this is property we have bought for that purpose. I hope we can get other property, but that's certainly not guaranteed, both financially and space-wise. And so meeting as much of the need as we can as possible is important. And then also, like, I strongly agree to the point of, like, I obviously don't want this to become a place where it's unhealthy to live and doesn't meet any of our other goals. So like, to some line that I can't clearly define, I strongly agree. And then at some point, it, you know, not, we haven't built something that's a good place for our community to live, which I guess goes to number two of, like, I absolutely want a mix of incomes and household types. Hopefully also the, you know, rental and ownership realm, if we can do that. I don't see that we should be subsidizing market rate housing with property we've bought. I guess I don't fully understand the debate of 120 being or not being market rate, but I...
Gladys?
I agree with point number one. I would like to remind, I've heard this come up twice, our fellow peers here. We cannot presume assumptions based on the socioeconomic statuses that we're choosing that we're going to, it's going to be the slums of Hood River. Let's not do that, okay? Number two, I agree with it, with the exception of market rate, folks. This is the one opportunity that we have. So let's really focus on those who are hurting the absolute most. And that here would be our families and seniors that we just saw are 80% and below AMI.
I think the reference to maybe having some stuff that you could purchase, that would be, you would probably lease the land, so you didn't have to pay for the land. And then when you sold it, you'd only make 3% instead of 6% or 8% when you sell it. It'd be deed restricted. I think that those references that people were making were, we just want to make sure there's plenty of green space there. That, you know, it's just not wall-to-wall concrete, which is not nice. People don't want to have to live where we have jammed everything so close together. There's no, there's no green space, which it can be. I think that was the reference.
Right, I disagree with those comments, because Lot 700 was a great quality design that included all of that. So let's remember that, to some extent, this has happened before. And at the end of our vision, we're all going to share our priorities and know that my priority for sure is going to include a beautiful park connected to the trails. It's going to have a cat bus stop, high density, because that is what our people, our community members, have told us all on many occasions, many occasions.
Right, we hadn't, no one had said anything about having greenways or parks yet, so I just wanted to make sure. And now you have, Gladys, but I mean, we hadn't mentioned that previously in this discussion today. So I wanted people listening to know that we were going to include those things in these developments. So we could, because we hadn't said that, all right. Who else has not gone? Eric?
Um, so I agree that number one should be the focus. I've already said that, I think we all are in agreement that the focus of this should be 80% or below. I think we, we also need to be prepared to meet the market, because unless we're going to build this ourselves, which we're not, we have to negotiate with a private enterprise, or possibly a public enterprise, to get this built. And we want to, and my suggestion would be that we can't hold so tight to something necessarily that we end up getting nothing. But from a desirability standpoint, which is a discussion, perhaps more than the practicality of it, I would focus on number one. If it ends up that a dose of number two helps us get to number one better or more, then that practically speaking, we have, I would suggest being open to that. Someone said earlier in this meeting, maybe 75%, number one. I'm kind of translating that, and leaving room for the rest, up to 120. I agree, we wouldn't go above 120. Megan is dead-on right, where we're not going to have public subsidy of market housing. So leaving room for 120 that might help us achieve our economic goals with the right contractor. So like I said, we have to meet the market and be prepared to some compromise, but I frankly think both of those statements are correct. But I would, would like to focus on number one as much as we can, while also having these green space goals that we haven't talked about yet as well.
Great, I agree with number one. I think that if there, as everyone, practically everyone else has said, if we had to go up to 120 on a small portion, that could be leased land, and that would make it inexpensive enough. I don't want market rate. I think market rate might have gotten in the mix or talked about at some point. And let me just remind people why it's even mentioned in here in the first place, is the infrastructure, the roads, the sidewalks, the sidewalks on Rand Road, part of the stop sign, stoplight has to be paid for at Rand. All of those things add to the cost of the whole project. And I believe when we were working with on Lot 700, some of those costs, May Columbia Housing Authority had asked us to share, to help pay for some of those things. And that was a very, that was a small project compared to what this is. This is a much bigger piece of land. And I think that we were like, oh my God, how are we going to pay for that? You know, that's going to make the cost of these so high that nobody's going to bid on it. Nobody's, no affordable housing entity is going to do this, because there isn't enough subsidy to pay for all the infrastructure that needs to be done. And that might be why Claudia von Floto is talking about it too, because there's, there's huge amounts of infrastructure that have to be paid for. And I don't want market rate housing here. I just want people to know why we had that on there, and why there was some talk... and why there was some talk about the possibility of it at one time. It's, it's these infrastructure costs that are just outrageous. And we, and we can't help it. That's what it is. Okay, go ahead.
Alright, and any closing thoughts on, on these two questions? That will move forward. And this has come up already in some of your responses, but let's just run through it real quickly, make sure we're, we're understanding everybody's position on who, who we're trying to serve on the site, for rent, rental housing, owner occupied, or a mix. And maybe, maybe we can skip it. I think, I mean, I've been hearing some responses, so. I don't know if anybody has additional they wanna, to, to mention on this.
Does anyone have anything additional? Tim?
Well, you know, I mean, obviously, if we can have some proportion of, of a mix, that would be great. But again, I think like, the mayor is indicating it is a a function of financial considerations. So, you know, as a goal, a mix of rental and ownership would be great. I think there's value in people having ownership of properties and.
Yeah, one of the things that we've heard from some stakeholders this week is, is kind of the idea of getting people into some housing and then giving them someplace to go, to move up. And so, yeah, if you were able to accommodate both rental and owner occupied on the site, that might be a couple of those rungs in the ladder to help people move up a bit.
Gladys?
So will we have a land trust up and running by the time that this is up and, before being built? To really guarantee that? Like, can we be guaranteed that that's gonna happen?
What I can say is that I did, just spoke with representatives of the Big River Community Land Trust this morning. They are a 501(c)(3), they exist. This would be their first project if they were involved in it. There are other land trusts that we can look to as models that they've been studying as well. So I don't know that I can answer your question about guarantee, but we do have a land trust in the community. And we've also heard from the Mid Columbia Housing Authority that they may be able to provide a similar type of service.
Are there, I mean, with deed restriction, there's other mechanisms besides a land trust that could ensure that a, you know, homeowner occupied house stays in that whatever band we mandate, right?
I don't have a good handle on it right now, Megan. I'm, or Counselor Saunders, pardon me, I'm getting up to speed and looking at options and really leaning heavily on the consultants to help answer some of these questions.
Thanks, Kevin.
Again, I think what we've heard so far is a focus on 80% and below. If we can mix in that 80 to 120 through some sort of owner occupied product, that, that council is, is open to considering that. And the other thing that I've heard from several people is that design will be important. And, and we're gonna get more into that in the future, but, but so far, that's kind of what we've heard and what we'll be taking back to the consultants. And then, again, the details of how we do all this and what sort of trade-offs might be required is something that we'll be bringing back to you.
I think a land trust or some kind of an entity like Mid Columbia Housing Authority needs to be involved if we were going to do the housing that people purchase, because the city doesn't have the ability. We don't, you know, we don't do that. But it has to be monitored when some, when something is sold. You know, there's, there's just a lot of things that have to be done, and so we, we don't have the ability to do it. We rely on others.
Thank you, Mayor, for bringing that point. That was going to be a suggestion. Thank you for bringing it up.
Go ahead, Kevin.
Okay, well then we'll move forward to the types of housing that we think are appropriate on the site. Again, thinking about the income levels that we're interested in serving. What do we think is appropriate for this site?
Does anyone wanna? Go on that? Megan?
I mean, I guess I don't, appropriate feels like I don't quite know what you're asking, but in my mind, you know, I'm, I'm happy to see any or all of these or a mix of these. You know, fully acknowledging, given what we are aiming for, for income, yeah, probably conventional single dwelling is unlikely, and that's totally fine. But I guess part of my thing is like, we've got seven acres. I'm hoping we're building on quite a bit of it, and I just, I wouldn't want all seven acres to be just one housing type. I would, I would love a mix of housing types, and I think all of these are wonderful options for people to live in at different life stages and family sizes.
Jessica?
Yeah, I think Megan said it very well. And I would say, I think also the idea, one of the things, kind of other goals that we're gonna get to is thinking about how does the development integrate with the surrounding neighborhood, and so that's where I feel like some of these a mix of housing types would help with that.
Gladys?
I wholeheartedly agree with how Counselor Saunders said it.
Okay.
Quick, add my ditto in there too.
Okay, Eric?
Yeah, I would tend to agree. I, I'm assuming that the core of the project would be a multi-dwelling apartment house. But that does not foreclose the possibility of other, of other building types either. But to get those numbers where they need to be, I would assume that at the very least, there is going to be at least one significant multi-dwelling structure on the property, and that would be consistent with my vision for this, which is to to have this be an area where we do in fact have density, where that might not be possible, other parts in the, of the community, but that to me, this, speaking only for myself, I view this as a pivot from the Morrison Park project to this, and Morrison Park obviously involved a multi-dwelling building, so I would assume, like I say, that that would form a significant component, but not foreclosing other options as well.
Tim?
I feel like a, in as much as it's possible, a mix probably would be the most livable situation for folks. But again, I think as Rachel indicated, the design aspect of this is something that needs much detail. But anyways, I think a mix would be, would be really desirable.
So I I wish that we'd had, if you, if you'd said that all the multifamily units were all gonna be two-bedroom, 1,000 square feet, and then each of these other units that you have on here are also two-bedroom, 1,000 square feet, and then you would have put a dollar amount on each of these blocks. That would have really helped, just FYI, because then you could have said, okay, the multifamily is gonna be, you know, $100 a square foot, or $100,000 per unit, and then if you get a courtyard, then you're gonna be X, and then if you get this, you're gonna be X. And then the amount of space each one's gonna take up, because for me, that deep dive into the numbers is where we're gonna, that, that's rubber meets the road. I agree with Eric. That being said, I agree with Eric. I think we're gonna have at least one larger multi-unit, and I think to get the numbers we would, that I would personally like to really have there, that most things are gonna need to be attached, whether it's a courtyard, or rowhouse, or plexus. Individual units, whether it's cottage cluster, or single-family, or narrow lot, are going to take, it'll be more expensive and take a lot more space, so I guess I'd rather clump houses a little bit closer together and get a little more park. So that, that's what I'm looking at. I think everyone's gone.
Great. Thank you, Mayor McBride. So examples of other neighborhoods that you think, or places that you think we should be considering as we look at alternatives, options for this site?
Anyone wanna go on that first? Mark?
So I'll do it really fast, so I have a minute from the vision, but I, I think that the, what Mid Columbia Housing did down on Lot 700 was, was a great example of multifamily done nicely, and I'd like to see that. The, there's a cottage thing over in White Salmon that Dustin showed us on Monday night that, that might be an example of another piece, so.
Anyone else? Tim?
Follow up with Mark, I think a mix of those two scenarios would be fantastic.
I'll just say ditto.
Anyone else have any?
What would the worst addition be? I quadruple that. Yes, I agree.
Anyone else? Okay, I think something I've always thought wasn't, was, was fairly good was American Village, which is, you know, they're connected, I don't know how many units, you know, there might be four to 10 two-story, but they were all, they're all connected, and there's kind of little paths in between, and I kind of like that concept, which is, you know, they're, they're not apartments, but I kind of like that concept. Gladys?
What's American, sorry.
American Village is behind, oh gosh, what's that church's name? It's behind that one church right next to Bunting's back there.
Avalon, it's off of Avalon.
I wanted to highlight a neighborhood park that's up in the Odell area, and I, I want us to really focus on that park, because it's, it serves, you know, grandma, it serves mom and dad, and then it serves kids as far as like multi-generational use. And I just wanted to talk about that park.
Okay, any, anything else? Anyone?
Alright, thanks. Moving forward, so again, in addition to housing, Westside Community Trail, park space, streets, sidewalks, transportation improvements. Are there other elements should, that should be part of development of this site?
Gladys?
As far as transportation, as I mentioned earlier, a cat bus stop that has beautiful shelter to keep people nice and dry.
Tim?
Thanks, Mayor. I think as I mentioned previously, I think that there's different, different components to affordability, and so I would like to see solar or other ways of reducing energy consumption and energy costs that these units incorporated into the project somehow. And, you know, looking forward, I think energy is just going to become more and more expensive. And it's just gonna be more and more intractable for the people living there, so I mean, in as much as we can keep those costs at a minimum, I think that's gonna be really helpful.
Others? Jessica?
And no, we've talked about parks a lot, and I just wanted to point out, because the slide doesn't actually say parks, but I think it's, I think everybody's heard that we're talking about parks.
Anyone else? Eric?
Yes, I will second the sentiment that I've heard here today, that we should see this as an opportunity to increase our green space and park space on the west side, which is a challenge we need to be keeping in mind generally, because as our west side gets greater density and development, the risk of having not enough parks for that area, not only for this location, but for the rest is an issue. Now, the priority needs to be from our grant monies, from our policies, to have the focus, of course, be on achieving our affordable housing, but it does seem like there's an opportunity to make this a beautiful space for the people that live there primarily, but if we can also have it work into our larger park planning, that makes sense to me. As well as trail, I saw the word trail, that sounds wonderful. There has been talk on and off throughout the community to having our city better connected for bikes and trails, and that sounds like a good thing to me, and having a thought toward that as we approach this development seems wise. The other thing I'll mention that hasn't been mentioned, but I'll throw in because I live very close to this area, Rand and Sherman, which is very near this spot, is actually a pretty dangerous spot to be a pedestrian. I think Rand is now 25 miles an hour. People that lived here a while will know that it used to be 35, maybe even 40, and the habit is drive pretty fast up that hill. And walking in the dark, there's no sidewalks, is actually pretty darn dangerous, so having a vision to have Rand beyond just the four corners of this location seems important. If we have young children walking down Rand, there's no sidewalks, heading down to Walmart or Taco Bell, whatever it may be. I can just say, as a person who lives near this at night, it can be a dangerous spot walking, so road safety in and around and getting to and from should be, of course, the city would think of this, but I just mentioned it because it wasn't mentioned before.
Others? I'd like to echo Tim's sentiment on, I, I, yes, I think we need to have park in that area. I'd like to see some concepts for how much housing we could get and how big a park might be. You know, and if we have two or three concepts, and one might be, oh, well, the park's gonna be X size, and then we get X units, but if you make it a little bit smaller, you can get this many more units. I'd like to be able to look at that kind of thing, because I just want to have as many housing units as, as we can there. So, and then to echo Tim on the energy, there are so many things that the building codes say that you need to do now, which are really fantastic and so much better than they were 20 years ago. But there is one level more that you, builders can do, and since I've just done a house, I'm very familiar with what they are. And they are not really super expensive, some of this stuff. And so I think if we could get that, those kind of code things included in an RFP, it, it is gonna cost the people that live there so much less money for energy if they can, if we can do just some of these smaller upgrades.
Thank you, Mayor McBride. Anything else you would like the staff to know as we continue working with a consultant and start preparing some of those scenarios so that you can compare and think about some of the trade-offs?
Alright, let's give our, we're getting down there. Mark, let's hear your vision. I want to hear your vision. This is the time, it looks like.
And Kevin, maybe stop sharing your screen. That'll be, I think, make it easier. There we go.
This is, this is the last question, isn't it?
Yes, last question.
Okay, go ahead, Mark.
So just real quick, are we gonna talk to the consultants too, like these other groups, or is, is, is it filtered through this meeting?
Right now, the, the plan is just filtered through this meeting.
Okay, my, my vision, and it's really consistent with all these things that we've been talking about, so, so that's, I think, wonderful, is to see the site basically as three equally geographical use things. One is multifamily, you know, lower than 80%, ala Lot 700, so that was just about two and a half acres. I think we can say between two and a half, three acres, we can get 75 to 100 units that looks really nice. units that looks really nice. The second, third would be using it as a demonstration project for cottage cluster homes that we want to do. Having a deed restricted to the 120% of median. But it allows us to show developers, here's what a development looks like that could produce attainable housing. And then the third, third would be the open space and park. So gluing everything together, having an interface nicely with the neighborhoods. The, the connection, you know, with the, the trail that goes, you know, connects to J Mar, basically, or, you know, 20th Street should be connected, the sidewalks, you know, safely to get up to Sherman. The connection to Sherman, heading towards 30th. All those things are going to really advance multimodal transportation and livability. And there's still room for an Odell-sized park that, that I completely agree with Gladys, that, that that's a great model of a park. So there, that's my thirds. We should look at it as thirds.
Thanks, Mark. Others? Visions? Comments? Megan?
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm not going to be quite as strict on my, my acreage as Mark. And I, and I think of those thirds, I, I would prioritize 80 and below a bit more than the other two. And I don't want the 80 to 120 to just be cottage clusters if possible. But I feel like I've covered this, you know, my vision is definitely a mix of ages and incomes and, you know, within the 80 and 120 below. And, and like family sizes and family types and but I think the, the big picture vision, and maybe this is getting into a bit more design and or infrastructure of, I, I really want the site to feel like it belongs and is a part of Hood River and isn't just like a separate small city within our city. You know, some, some developments on large lots have that tendency to kind of be insular, be looking inwards. Then, and, and feel like they are, they are separate and other from the stuff around them. And I, I really would like this to, to feel like it's very much just an extension of and continuation of our city and feels the same.
Tim? And then Jessica?
Well, I guess, you know, I think I agree with both Mark, Mark and Megan. And generally, I just want it to be a place where people are happy to come home to. That, that's livable, affordable for them, and someplace that they come home and just feel good about. And I think that there's multiple ways of getting at that. And I really do, again, want to drive home the trying to make it such that it's environmentally sustainable as, as much as possible and having a good connection to, to nature as well.
Jessica?
I, I don't have like a vision statement, but just to reiterate some of the things that I know we've all said, but just, you know, something that's well-designed and is integrated with the neighborhood. I, I am hoping, you know, that this really is like a a showpiece for Hood River to show how, you know, different kinds of families and income levels can live together with the, have it be, you know, like Tim said, just a wonderful place that people want to live. So thank you.
Thanks. Any, anyone else? Gladys?
There you go. Very similar to what I'm hearing my fellow counselors say, I'm looking for a beautiful area to live where folks take pride in where they live. And that within that little park, maybe some of the local school kids help develop a beautiful picture on it. Again, where folks are just feeling a sense of pride to live here. That mixed incomes, but again, focusing on those most vulnerable right now, as Jessica mentioned, this is like the opportunity that we have. So let's make it just a desirable, beautiful place to live that includes parks connected to trails. It's energy efficient. Again, a beautiful location for folks to build a sense of community.
Great. Um, I think everyone, Eric, did you have anything? Just?
I wouldn't have a lot to add. I like what I've heard. I like Mark's one-third, one-third, one-third. I would probably order them very similarly, you know, focusing on the lowest end, probably second on the parks. And then the cottage idea or some other form, maybe I've reordered those slightly. Frankly, if I think one definition of success for me would be is if we're actually at a point where we're going to execute, and it's between what Megan said and what Mark said, and we're choosing one or either of those, that either one would be a success in my view. Which, you know, I, I do want to keep a sense of reality that we have to negotiate something with a private enterprise, actually make this happen. And we need to be in a position to compromise to make sure we pull something over the line. But, you know, this is our land, and that is a significant nut. So I think we have a pretty good chip going into these discussions. I keep an open mind because we just have to be practical in what someone's actually going to build. But like I say, if we're, if we ultimately get to choose between what Megan said and what Mark chooses, you know, that's a huge success in my view.
I didn't think I was that contradicted with Megan's.
That's fair, but.
Her, her neighborhood focus is absolutely, absolutely important, so.
I think this is my way of trying to agree with you both. If we can get to that, that's wonderful.
All right, I think that we're, we've got just a couple minutes. I think that the I think the one-third, one-third, one-third is a little bit optimistic, but I think that we're going to have probably, just guessing, looking at that land, 10 or 15% of it, that's going to be really hard to do anything on because of the topography. You know, we're not going to have every single inch to do something on because of water, drainage, things like that. And hopefully, we can incorporate it all that in. And part of that could be in a park or something. But I would go with a little bit less park to get a little more housing. I guess that's my bottom line for the one-third, one-third, one-third. I would, might go a little, little bit more for the 80 and below number. And if we had to go a little bit less on park, that, that might be okay with me, because I think some of this area that we're not going to really be able to use because of topography is going to be some natural space that's going to be surrounding the area anyway. So we'll just have to figure that out when we get more surveys on what we can use and what we can't. Great discussion, you guys. Do you need something else from us today, Kevin?
I really appreciate everybody's time. Thank you, Mayor.
Great, great. We're going to have lots more discussions on this, you guys. So this is just, this is a great start. How, what's, what's the next step, Kevin? If you could just give us that in a nutshell, and then we'll be done.
Sure. Right now, we expect to launch a website in January where we'll be able to start sharing information about the site and the project with the public and start to accept some feedback. By March, we should have two or three development proposals, kind of options for consideration, including some rough numbers about how to achieve affordability. So in addition to the design work, the consulting team is looking very closely at how to achieve affordable housing, sources of money that are available, and how to, to, to put everything together. So we should have a conversation like this, another check-in in March to discuss those scenarios.
Okay, and will the infrastructure numbers be calculated into some of that? Are we going to be getting any of that to, or not yet?
I, I mean, we're definitely working on some of those issues. And, and, you know, the city purchased this property after a developer looked very closely at it. And the city gave that developer quite a bit of feedback on, on and off-site improvement requirements. So there are some, some cost estimates already in place. And obviously, it can be revised, given current construction costs. They've escalated pretty quickly in a short period of time. But, yep, be looking at those issues as well.
Okay, Gladys, did you have a question?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure. So in the stakeholder interviews, we talked about land trusts, Mid-Columbia Housing Authority, they are going to be included in those interviews.
Yeah, but Mid-Columbia Housing Authority, the executive director, Joel Madsen, participated, as did one of their board members, Stu Watson. We also spoke with Kenny LaPointe of the Mid-Columbia Community Action Council. And on the land trust side, yep, just met with members of the Big River Land Trust today.
Great. Thank, thank you, Kevin. Thank you, Rachel. And I think we have a few more people from staff here. Thank you for taking your lunchtime to allow us to get this meeting done today. Appreciate it, everyone. All right. I think this is it before the holidays. You guys all have a great holiday. Stay safe. Wash your hands, wear your mask.
We all get the rest of the year off.
The rest of the year off. Oh, you know what? I don't, you know what? I want to, I want to say one more thing. I don't know how many people are still on. It's a, this is not, I didn't want to start the meeting with this because it's a negative thing. Unfortunately, Hood River has the worst numbers in the whole state right now, per capita for COVID. So please, you guys, be really careful. I think the huge percentage of the transmission is through family members. It's not through work. It's not through going to the grocery store. It's not getting your gas. It's not all those kinds of things. It's family members getting together with family members. That's the bulk of all of the cases. That's what it is. So try to distance. I know it's a holiday, but try to distance. Thanks, guys.
Happy holidays.
Yep.